Six o'clock and so please may I welcome everyone to this virtual meeting of the council. This meeting is being held under regulations which came into effect on the 4th of April 2020 in response to Covid-19. My name is councillor Patrick Cunningham, Mayor of Winchester and chairperson of the council. There are a few housekeeping issues to run through. Please can I ask everyone present in this virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted and your camera is turned off whilst you are not addressing the council, as this will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. This is especially important with your microphone and so many attendees online at one time. Can I now ask the Democratic Services Officer to undertake a roll call of members of the council to confirm who is present this evening? David.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, members. If you could unmute your microphone, I will now run through you in alphabetical order. Councillor Atwater.
Yes, good evening, present.
Councillor Becker.
Yes, hello, present.
Councillor Bell.
Present.
Councillor Bentote.
Present.
Councillor Bronk.
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Brooke.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Cleer.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Cleburne.
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Cook.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Crask.
Present.
Councillor Cunningham.
Present.
Councillor Cutler.
Present.
Councillor Evans.
Present.
Councillor Fern.
Present.
Councillor Ferguson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Gemmell. Councillor Gemmell. I'll come back to councillor Gemmell at the end. Councillor Godfrey.
Good evening, I am present.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Green. Councillor Green.
I was just speaking to councillor Green and he's having difficulty accessing the meeting, so if somebody could email him the link or something similar, that would be appreciated.
Thank you. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Hiscock.
Present.
Councillor Horrell.
Yes, good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Humby.
Yes, present.
Councillor Hutchison.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Laming.
Present.
Councillor Learning.
Present.
Councillor Lumby.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Mather.
I think she might be having problems.
Councillor Mather, I'll come back to councillor Mather at the end. Councillor McLean.
Good evening, Mr Mayor, present.
Councillor Miller.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Murphy.
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Pearson.
Good evening and present.
Councillor Porter.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Power.
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Prince.
Presence.
Councillor Reed.
Present.
Councillor Raffel.
Present.
Councillor Rutter. Councillor Rutter. I'll return to councillor Rutter at the end. Councillor Scott.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Todd.
Present.
Councillor Weir.
Present.
Councillor Weston.
Yes, I'm present, thank you.
Councillor Williams.
Yes, I'm present, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just return to Mr Mayor. Councillor Gemmell. No? Councillor Green.
Yeah, I'm here now, present, thank you. I had a lot of troubles getting on.
Thank you, councillor Green. Councillor Mather.
Mr Mayor, it's councillor Horrell. Councillor Mather was cut off and is struggling to get back in. If somebody could help her, please, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we will do, councillor Horrell, thank you.
Yep.
Councillor Rutter. Councillor Rutter. Okay. Mr Mayor, other than those three members, all members are present. Officers in the other room will endeavour to try and get those members into the meeting. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We will try to get those three members back in as soon as we can. Please can I advise that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the website and then can be found next to the meeting's details where the recording will remain thereafter. The meeting will also be recorded with the video upload to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Members and officers who are appropriate for each item, it is important to please only use the chat function of the meeting to indicate that you are wishing to speak and I will invite you to then speak at the appropriate time. Please do not use the hand function for this meeting. Each member will be invited to speak in turn and therefore I would encourage all members to keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible. If you do wish to raise a point of order or explanation in accordance with the constitution, please also use the chat function only. I will invite that member to speak immediately I become aware of the request. Again, please do not use the hand function for this meeting. When speaking and referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page or the paragraph number. Finally, members, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point and for any period of time, could they please make themselves known to me and again through the chat function? I will announce to the meeting that you are to leave the meeting and your return if applicable. Thank you. Item one. The minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on 23rd of September 2020. May I sign these as a correct record, please?
Agreed.
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 We'll do that at the end, Stephen MacKay. Agenda item number two, disclosure of interests. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business before us tonight? Are there any county councillors present?
So, yes, Mr Mayor.
Yes, Mr... Yes, Mr Mayor. I declare an interest as a county councillor concerning waste disposal. However, it is a personal...
Councillor Todd.
Sorry. It's councillor Hiscock. I'd like to declare an interest in that I am a county councillor and there may be certain items discussed tonight which may have some relevance towards my activities on the county council. And there will be a non-projudicial interest.
Councillor Porter, I have a personal interest that I'm a county councillor but I'm not in a position where I can make those decisions at the county council.
Mr Mayor, councillor Humby, the same as the other county councillors, thank you.
And Humby.
And Mr Mayor, councillor Weir is indicating she wished to declare an interest.
Councillor Weir, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I wanted to declare an interest relating to the questions at the end of the meeting. I have a personal but non-projudicial interest as a trustee of the University of Winchester Academy Trust, which runs the Barton Farm Academy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Move on to agenda item number three, announcements. I have a number of announcements to make today. My first announcement this evening is with regard to former councillor and past mayor Jean Hamilton, who passed away on the 13th of October. Jean was elected to the council in 1994 and was mayor from 2003 to 2004. She was also a Bishop's Waltham parish councillor for 26 years and was also chairman during this time. At the city council, she served on several committees and was chair of the standards committee. Jean retained her involvement with many charities throughout her retirement and having been employed in the National Health Service for many years, she was also a non-executive director of the Mid Hampshire Primary Care Trust for a time. Several members will also be familiar with another former councillor and past mayor, Major Dougie Coville, MBE, DCM. Dougie celebrates his 100th birthday this month and I have sent him greetings from the mayoralty and the wider council to Dougie for his happy occasion. My next announcement is with regard to the Mayor of Winchester's local hero awards. The awards were launched in September and offered residents the chance to celebrate unsung heroes from across the district for their efforts to help friends and neighbours during the Covid-19 pandemic. In addition to the 113 individuals and groups who were nominated, 48 parish councils and 19 local community groups have also been recognised for their efforts. Certificates have now been issued to all of these heroes and as we are unable to have a special ceremony, I have recorded a special video which will now be played. This year has been unlike any other that we have experienced in our lifetime. The past seven months have been some of the most challenging for more than half a century. But it is during the very worst of times that we have seen the very best in human nature and we've seen many, many acts of kindness and sacrifice. Those who have gone the extra mile come from all walks of life and backgrounds, from those behind the counter of the local village shop to the inspirational doctors and nurses working tirelessly in our hospitals and those businesses recreating what they do to serve their community. Now I am delighted to say that each of these heroes in the Winchester district can be recognised with the mayor's local hero award. During the pandemic, I've seen first hand communities coming together to support one another. I've heard countless tales of imagination, teamwork, self-sacrifice, kindness and those who have helped others through the toughest of times. We have seen businesses reimagine their services to help the local community, like at the Sparschold Village shop, which moved its counter outside. We've seen catering companies, pubs and restaurants use their expertise to deliver meals to residents. One particular story that touched my heart was the person that passed down handwritten notes from local children to those who were isolated so to cheer them up in their time of need. While one member of the community came in every day to Trinity in Winchester to make more than 150 meals every day to help feed the city's homeless population. For many people, shielding during this time has been a particular challenge. But thanks to groups like the Week Friendship Group Volunteers, they found new ways of reaching elderly people to give them much needed companionship at a time of isolation and loneliness. It is also amazing to see people come forward in new ways. Winchester Mutual Aid on Facebook grew from 12 to 3,000 members in a matter of a few weeks, helping parts of the community across the district and harnessing the power of social media for the greater good. Our parish council sprang into action to support their communities as well. There are so many examples of care, compassion, humanity, service, selflessness, inspiration and innovation by individuals and groups across the district. Because things are now different, I cannot thank each and every one of these amazing heroes in person at an award ceremony, but I can truly say from the bottom of my heart, thank you in this video. My next announcement is with regard to the Queen's Birthday Honours List and I have written the following three people, two of the following three people from the Winchester district who were honoured. Professor Paul Elkington of Ozzelbury, a professor of respiratory medicine at Southampton University for services to medicine particularly during Covid-19 pandemic, a member of the Order of British Empire. Vera M. Collings of Marthaworthy for services to the community, a medal of the Order of the British Empire. And Ronald D. Williamson of Bishop's Waltham for services to the community, a medal of the Order of the British Empire. Finally, this evening, please can I remind members that in light of the government's recent guidance regarding the lockdown, this Sunday's Remembrance Sunday service at the cathedral will not now take place. The live stream of the clergy-only service will take place at 10:30 AM. I have been invited to join the clergy and I will lay a wreath on behalf of Winchester district at the War Memorial. We will also be asking residents across the district to pay their respects by standing on their doorstep at 11 AM on Sunday the 8th of November to remember the fallen. I have recorded a special video including with the Royal British Legion, which will be released on the council's social media channels just before 11 AM on both Sunday the 8th and Wednesday the 11th of November. That's Sunday the 8th and Wednesday the 11th of November. Leader, do you have any announcements?
And thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I have two announcements or two updates more than announcements. The first is a few words about free school meals and what the council did and the measures we took to help local children in need. I'm sure, Mr Mayor, everyone here was as dismayed and disappointed as I that the government chose not to support the voucher system to enable schoolchildren to continue to receive free school meals during the half-term break. Fortunately for the families and children of our district, I am delighted to report that the city council did step in where the government failed. Firstly, we worked with the Winchester Basics Bank and the Meon Valley Food Bank to make sure that food packages would be available to local families and they were also supported with extra money where needed. In addition, we were very pleased that arrangements were made that gave families the ability to self-refer themselves to the Basics Bank and that this was advertised and indeed is on their websites right now. We also contacted a number of our partner organisations working with young people to ask what help they needed and additional financial help was given where it was needed. I would firstly like to thank our officers and staff for responding so quickly to this emergency. As you know, half-term was last week and it was all hands to the pump on Monday so that support could go out to those who needed it most. It was also really, really heartening to see the very many local charities, businesses and residents who stepped in to offer free meals throughout the district. And I would also like to particularly thank each and every one of them for what they did. Of course, the businesses themselves are going through an extremely difficult time. So for them to put their hand out in this way to offer help to those most in need was truly heartening. With the continuing threat to jobs due to the pandemic, unfortunately, we are looking ahead to a worsening scenario for families on very low incomes. And so going forward, we will be calling on the government and other agencies to make sure that plans are put in place to ensure that no child locally will go hungry at Christmas and that all those entitled to free school meals continue to receive them during the school holidays. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've then got another announcement to make on the pandemic. Since Saturday night's announcement by the Prime Minister that there will be a four-week period of restrictions between Thursday the 5th of November and Wednesday the 2nd of December, our officers and staff have been working flat out to ensure that all arrangements and preparations are in place to support both our residents and businesses where we can in the coming weeks. The council has worked really hard during the last lockdown to keep our key services running, collecting the bins, keeping parks open, working with the community to support those in need and answering the phone to those who needed our help. I would like to reassure council that our officers and staff who really stepped up last time are ready to do so again. Working together with our partners across the district, the parish and town councils, the huge plethora of voluntary organisations, which the mayor has just very, very, very well alluded to, and of course the county council, we will be there to support our communities during this difficult time. And of course, as we go into this second lockdown, it is a very different scenario to the first. We will have long, dark nights and the weather will not be as inviting to get out and about as it was in the summer months. And we know that there are going to be many who will feel lonely and isolated and we must do all we can to support them. We also recognise that this is such a difficult time for our businesses across the district because they too have worked tremendously hard to open and encourage visitors back to our high streets and this was all working well. I cannot imagine how devastated they must feel having to shut down once more when they had only just begun to look forward to the Christmas period. I'm sure you will want to join me in acknowledging that this is a really tough time for our residents and for our businesses. It is also going to be a challenging time for our officers and staff too. So on behalf of the council, I would like to say thank you. Thank you, officers and staff, for all you are doing and will continue to do to support our communities and businesses in the weeks ahead. And members, these are very unusual circumstances, but as we are all together tonight, I would like to take the opportunity to ask the chief executive to outline some of the arrangements that we have put in place and our priorities to help and support those residents and businesses over the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Chief Executive, do you have any announcements to make, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, Leader. Mr Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak at the meeting for perhaps a little longer than is usual for an officer. But to build on the Leader's comments, I thought it would be helpful to set out the action that we as a council have taken over the past three days to respond to the emerging national restrictions which come in force just past midnight this evening. During this month of additional restrictions, our key priorities are to support individuals or groups who are identified at most at risk from Covid-19. Then to support businesses who have been asked to close and work with those who are able to remain open to ensure they are operating within a Covid-secure guidance scenario. We could not support the district so effectively if it were not for our community groups and parish councils and we have celebrated just some of those heroes this evening. Therefore, a key priority is to enable and support the valuable work of community groups and individuals who are taking practical action every day to support their neighbours. And of course, we will maintain critical frontline services, especially those which may face extra demand or are facing additional operating challenges in the coming weeks. Therefore, members, I can share with you that in the past three days since the announcement made by the Prime Minister, we have put staff resources in place to support the community with any personal services such as shopping or prescription delivery. Most importantly, we have contacted our community groups and local councils to check that they stand ready and able to support local people as required as they are known and trusted to their local communities. We have checked and we are confident that we have sufficient rooms in place to continue to offer a room for the night for anyone that finds themselves without one. We have sent an update bulletin to businesses already this week outlining the new restrictions and our teams are ready and able and have already been in contact with businesses to provide support and advice during the first part of this week. Most importantly, we have ensured that our team is ready and we are fully briefed to be able to action swiftly any payments to be made to those who find themselves in need over the coming period. We have sent a special residents bulletin this evening outlining the new restrictions and our website has been updated and is fully covering all requirements. We have also taken steps to ensure our partners are aware of the new requirements and from this evening, our leisure centres will close, our sports pitch bookings have been suspended and our visitor information centre will close for the period. We will however ensure that our park and ride service is maintained and we will continue to offer complimentary parking for key workers for the next month. We have checked our waste and street cleaning team are ready and able to continue delivering critical services just as they have over the past eight months. I've also advised our staff that business as usual should continue, but members, as you know, this may take a little longer than usual just over the next month because our priority has to be to limit the spread of infection. However, our staff are fully equipped to work at home and we have a Covid-secure workplace to enable those colleagues who are unable to work at home to come into the office. Our reception will remain open with an appointment system so we can see the most urgent cases swiftly. We also have a parish liaison meeting next week and will once again ensure that we work with our local councils to provide the best service to our communities at this time. Members, I hope that's a helpful update of the action that your council is taking to support your community at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I'll now move on to agenda item number four, questions from members of the public. Please can I welcome members of the public who have been invited to attend this evening and have submitted questions for council to answer. Please can I ask that until I call your name, that you keep your microphone muted and your camera switched off? Thank you. I understand that we have received two questions for this evening's meeting. All members have recopied of the questions received, which have been circulated, I believe electronically and have also been published on the council's website. Please can I now call upon Fiona Isaacs to ask her question? Mrs Isaacs, please can you confirm that you are present this evening?
I'm present, thank you.
Mrs Isaacs, please can you ask your question as it is written in the order paper or if you prefer, you can simply refer members to this. You will have two minutes to ask your question. A reminder that following the response given by the member, you may ask one supplementary question which must arise directly out of the original question or reply. Mrs Isaacs.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I ask the portfolio holder to... The cost of continuing to use the green bags for the garden waste collection. Residents currently believe following receipt of the Lib Dem focus that if they continue to use their bags, there'll be no charge. Or can we expect the same outrageous 41% increase on their council tax which has been levied on the 240-litre bin? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Isaacs, very much. Councillor Todd, can you respond, please?
Yes, indeed, Mr Mayor. I'd like to thank Mrs Isaacs for her question. If a resident currently has a bag to collect for residual or recycling waste, there are other technical reasons why a garden waste bin is not suitable for their address. They will be able to continue with a bag to collect for garden waste but will have to pay £39 a year for collection. This will pay for up to two bags to be collected and if they choose to pay £59 a year, they will be able to have three bags collected. This compares to the current system where having one bag collected from a household is free, but purchase of a second bag to enable a two-bag collection costs £25 and purchase of two extra bags to enable a three-bag collection is £75. So there is a mistaken assumption in your question. At no point in recent history has it been possible to get the equivalent volume of waste in a 240-litre bin collected by the council free. to get the equivalent volume of waste in a 240-litre bin collected by the council free of any charges. Indeed, the cost of signing up for a year's collection of three bags under the current system, which is the equivalent of 240-litre bin, is actually £16 less than the current charge for signing up to have three bags collected. I'm glad also that Mrs Isaacs makes reference to the cost of garden waste collections in relation to council tax. This is something this administration takes very seriously. The city council put through the third lowest council tax increase in Hampshire this year, far below the average increase put through by other parties. But following guidance issued by the county council and in response to the county council decision to retain all the revenue from recycling, all councils in Hampshire, without any exception, and irrespective of party, now charge for garden waste collection or have permitted to do so. But I think her suggestion, Mrs Isaacs' suggestion, that we look at the cost of signing up for garden waste collections alongside band E council, district council tax across Hampshire, is a useful thing to do and reveals a very interesting pattern. The most expensive authority for the combination of band E council tax and signing up garden waste collections is Gosport Borough Council, who charged £290.75 for the service. Conservative-run Havens charged £253.48 for band E council tax and garden waste collections. Rushmore charged £251.42. Conservative-run Faram will be charging £231.22 to sign up for garden waste collections, band E council tax and the new bin. New Forest charged £213.36. Basingstoke charged £204.54. East Hampshire charged £203.73. Dropping down £20 a year, we get to Winchester on an £182.09. And since you've brought party politics into it, I have to confess at this point that it is possible if you want to save 68 pence a year and have a 20-kilo garden waste bag collection instead of a 140-litre garden waste bin collection, and move to Conservative-run Test Valley and pay £181.41 a year. Of course, if you're keen to really save money, Lib Dem-led Eastleigh charges £168.91 for the combination of their band E council tax and garden waste collections. So if you look at the combination of council tax and garden waste charges for every single authority in Hampshire, what you will see is that Winchester is the third cheapest combined cost of council tax and garden waste collections and as well as signing up for a new bin, and only Lib Dem Eastleigh is significantly cheaper. So overall, let's not forget that since this administration took control of the council, we have halved the rate of missed bins and improved the quality of recycling and the amount of recycling done by the council. We're not just offering better services, but if we compare ourselves to councils right across Hampshire, we're cheaper too.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Mrs Isaacs, would you like to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Can the portfolio holder confirm if there will be any concessions or reductions and who this might apply to? Obviously, as we enter another lockdown, many people from families and the elderly will be experiencing financial issues as outlined by previous speakers, and this is another expense that they cannot afford. Thank you.
Indeed, and thank you for asking that question. And the way we have sought to address the concern that we share with residents for the need to keep this service as cheap as possible is to make the service as cost-effective as we can. The £39 charge is more than £15 cheaper than the average cost to sign up for garden waste collections in other Hampshire authorities. We are not currently in a position to offer discounts on the new service, even though we would have liked to have been able to. But as other councils have highlighted, we face extreme financial pressure at the current time, and we are suffering from the decision by Hampshire County Council that means we no longer benefit from the recovery of costs of material supply as this is now being packed by Hampshire County Council. What I did commit to do at a full council meeting in July was to do a review as soon as we can after the introduction to see if it is going to be possible to make any necessary changes once we can see how the service is doing and how many people have signed up to it. But at the current time, we in common with all the authorities in Hampshire bar one are not in a position to offer this kind of discount. And actually, the price we offer compared to the one council that does offer a discount is actually lower than their discounted price. So that's the current situation.
Thank you, councillor Todd, and to Mrs Isaacs for your question. Please may I remind you that your question and the answers will be published on the council's website in due course. Mrs Isaacs, may I please ask that you now turn off your camera and mute your microphone for the remainder of the meeting? You are welcome to remain in the meeting. Alternatively, if you prefer, you can leave by pressing the telephone symbol with the red background. Of course, you can continue to listen to the live audio stream from the council's website. Thank you once again.
Thank you.
The second question this evening from Mr Tony Langridge. We've been advised that Mr Langridge is in Cornwall and not enough signal in order to join the meeting with us here tonight. Accordingly, an answer to his question will be published on the website for Mr Langridge later in due course. Agenda item five, urgent decision, Her Majesty's Courts and Tribunal Service licence to occupy rooms in Winchester Guildhall. I'm going to call on officer Catherine Knight, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you. Mr Mayor, agenda item five refers to a decision taken by the chief executive using delegated powers urgency and is on part two of the agenda. In line with the council's constitution, it is a requirement that officers report and that the council note the use of the urgency provisions at the next available meeting. The reasons for the urgency of the decision are set out in the agenda. On 16 October, the Democratic Services Update included a link to the decision notice.
I have a question coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see that there's a question from Caroline Horle. Miss councillor Horle, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you for accepting my request. Are we able just to seek clarification around the decision that we've been notified of this evening? I mean, I do think we all welcome the reuse of the Guildhall in these very difficult times and the introduction of the courts. But my question is about how that very significant decision had to be made using emergency powers, given that we had a council meeting on the 23rd of September when the leader referred to some discussions that were taking place. Here we are a few weeks later and we're told the decision is already made. So it's more about the process that has been applied to this negotiation. And given obviously we have a very significant number of staff impacted by the actions for the Guildhall, will this give our staff an opportunity to benefit from the new use? That isn't clear to us. So I'm just hoping that an officer could help us understand why we find ourselves with the emergency powers being used. I accept that that was done formally and the chair of scrutiny was asked, but I just think it would be helpful to all councillors this evening to understand the decision-making process and how we've sort of missed out on the cycle of that before this evening. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Horle. Catherine.
Mr Mayor, thank you. Councillor Horle, that isn't a point of order. The reasons for the decision being taken are in the decision notice, which was in the link to which is in the 16 October Democratic Services Update.
Thank you. Thank you. Members, please can we therefore note this matter?
Agreed.
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 That is agreed. Agenda item number six, notices of motion. The agenda sets out a notice of motion to be moved by councillor Lumby. Councillor Lumby, do you have a second for your motion, please?
Councillor Brook is my second. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
I second this motion, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brook. Do you wish to reserve your right to speak?
Yes, please. I'd like to reserve my right to speak, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Brook. Councillor Lumby, would you present your motion, please? May I remind you that you have a maximum of eight minutes?
Gosh, that's a good long time. I hope no one will sneak off for a general thing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you also to all members for allowing me to present this motion tonight and taking the time to discuss this important issue. Before we go into the detail, please can I also make it clear that this is not about the overwhelming majority of the gypsy, Roma and traveller communities that use authorised sites. Figures that I have seen show that this amounts to 96.6% of those communities. I for one, and I'm sure this applies to all members, welcome a diverse and inclusive society in our district based on respect for the rule of law, property and for one another. Next, if I may, some background to this motion. The Home Office launched a consultation on the issue of criminalising trespass to create unauthorised encampments in November last year. That consultation closed in March this year, since when there has been silence. As a result of the issue's experience with unauthorised encampments and the lack of progress, our neighbours at Test Valley District Council passed a motion in September in the same terms of the motion before us tonight. The motion was in fact proposed jointly by Conservative and Liberal Democrat councillors. Following Test Valley's decision, the southern parishes within our district asked the leader and chief executive to support their position. As a result, in accordance with their wishes, we brought this motion forward tonight for council to consider. So what is the issue that is so concerned Test Valley and the southern parishes? Mr Mayor, unauthorised encampments are an issue right across our district, both in the countryside and increasingly in the city, both in the park and rides and elsewhere. In my ward, it is a regular occurrence, especially on Bramding Common, where there was an encampment just last week. It is clear that significant problems can be caused by unauthorised encampments. Residents have told me about the uneased fear and intimidation they feel as a result. One, for example, told me about the need to move her horses urgently during the previous lockdown as a result of an encampment, abandoning her own land for a field she had to rent. And there is the waste that is left once the encampment has moved on. Last year, residents in Bramding cleaned up and removed 50 bags of rubbish after one encampment left. Otherwise, there is the cost to the council of cleaning up that mess. I've also had reports of travellers breaking into sites and requiring payment to leave. So are the current rules not sufficient? Well, Mr Mayor, our wonderful officers do an amazing job when an unauthorised encampment is set up. They have a strategy to deal with it, get in the council council to carry out vulnerability assessments, and then apply for court orders requiring the encampment to move on. In my experience, it generally takes about five days from start to finish. My thanks for all that they do. But this requires a large amount of officer time and money and clearly isn't a sufficient incentive for travellers to move to authorised sites. The police cannot act on sites of less than six caravans without a court order. And so we need a quicker process, a way that allows the police to act without a court order and which crucially provides sufficient incentive for travellers not to use unauthorised sites. And this is really important. We don't want police breaking up unauthorised camps. We want to avoid them altogether. The changes referred to in the Home Office consultation will help address this. On encampments of two caravans or more, the police will be able to require the unauthorised encampments to move at once and without the need for a court order. They can direct them to move to authorised sites, and they can seize the caravans if necessary. This should speed up the process considerably, protect residents and save officer time and council money. And it should provide an incentive to the owners of the approximately 1,000 caravans who use unauthorised encampments across the country. But there is an important point I should mention here. If we are to solve this issue and encourage the 4.4 centred travellers who use unauthorised sites to move on to authorised sites, we need to have sufficient authorised sites. As a council, we passed a good policy on this just under two years ago. But we don't yet have enough authorised sites, and we and other areas do need to address this. It's the vital other side of the coin, whether or not the law has changed to proposed. Thank you again, members, for listening. This is an important issue which affects the whole district and which our parishes have asked us to address. Please support this motion to encourage the government to make the legal changes that should help protect our residents, save our officers' time and the council money. Thank you.
You, councillor Lumby. The council now has up to 20 minutes to debate this motion. Do I have any councillors wishing to debate, please? I have councillor McLean. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A question really... Again, we keep hearing these words. Unauthor... have an explanation of what actually that is, whose land it is, who has control over it, et cetera. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Would you like me to answer that? Sorry, or I can cover that later.
No, I'm waiting for councillors to debate before I come back to you, councillor Lumby.
No problem. Just checking. Sorry, it was all full of silence. I didn't want to find out it was me that was causing it.
No, no. Councillor Gemmell, please. Councillor Gemmell.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr Mayor. I couldn't get the mute to come off, and I have now. No, it is just, it's debate rather than question, I'm afraid. It's just to say I really do support this motion. We have had the experience of the really unfortunate experience of having tinkerers who came and occupied our common, leaving masses of rubbish, broken glass. And the worst, I'm afraid, was that their exhibitionism in front of some of our older residents who walk their animals there. And there is nothing I can say that defends a man defecating in front of other people and then asking them if they're going to clear it up with their dog mess that they clear up. Thoroughly support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Gemmell. Councillor Lurney, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As the cabinet member responsible for the homeless, I cannot in good conscience support a proposal which impacts some of our most vulnerable residents. This proposal will criminalise homeless people sleeping rough or in cars and encourage them to conceal themselves in areas where we'll find it much harder to help them. The Wranglers Association has also warned of the danger of unintended consequences and that measures aimed at travellers are the and that measures aimed at travellers are the thin end of the wedge. At a time we should be encouraging and extending access to the countryside, we should be very careful about moving in this direction. I agree that the government needs to make it easier to deal with encampments on private land, but I cannot see how criminalisation will fix the problem. This particular measure isn't supported by the police and in a similar way to other forms of antisocial behaviour such as speeding, we can't make them take action if it's not considered a priority. Quoting Hampshire Police, simply utilising section 61 without adequate site provision elsewhere passes the buck to another local authority and police area and does nothing for the health and educational needs of the families being moved on. As councillor Lumby has said, we do need to solve the problem of encampments, but we need to find ways of doing it without using a very blunt tool to further marginalise sections of society. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lerni. I'm going to call on councillor Weir now, please. Councillor Weir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the points I made have been very eloquently covered, wanted to make, have been very eloquently covered by councillor Lerni for the most part. I am concerned that, well, councillor Lumby has raised through some of the issues. We haven't really been provided with any quantification or real clear definition of the problem. Councillor Gemmell has raised some issues as well, which I would believe that there is adequate criminal process to deal with some of the activities that she's referred to, which I accept are completely unacceptable. But I think we're moving, as councillor Lerni said, on to very dangerous territory here, criminalising trespass when we haven't explored perhaps within, across ourselves the remedies that are available and what would be most effective to get the outcomes that we want. And this may really not be the best, most efficacious solution. So, I feel that the motion grossly oversimplifies a profoundly important and complex area of civil liberties and civil rights. And it needs to be very carefully and well documented before we move forward with this and we need to consider it much greater length. So, I would really urge us not to rush to advocate creating a new category of criminal offence, which I think could well lead on to measures that none of us would wish to see on statute books. I won't be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Weir. Can I hear from councillor Clare, please? Councillor Clare.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the reasons landowners have problems is the lack of authorised sites, whether it be for travellers, gypsies, homeless. And this has been and will continue to be the focus, I believe, of social tension with accommodation issues at the core. Yes, there was a government consultation in March, obviously now closed. And as far as I am aware, we are awaiting the government to publish the proposals read this consultation. Police response was very negative towards criminalisation of trespass. And I feel a letter at this time perhaps would not be the way to proceed. As I said earlier, the consultation is closed. Therefore, I would like, we need, I think, to wait and come back to this once we have looked at the government proposals, which I'm sure we'll consider equalities and human rights. Then that is the time, I think, for us as a council to act. Thank you. I'm so sorry. So, with that, having said that, I will be voting against the motion this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Lerni. Now councillor McLean, you have asked a question. Have you got a contribution to the debate to make?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've just heard councillor Clare speak. And councillor Clare has a thing called the Wickham Horse Fair that appears regularly in Wickham with illegal encampments dotted all around the area and the comments that people from Wickham make to me, people from Bishop's Waltham make to me, people from Waltham Chase make to me about the rubbish and mess that is created. And I'm just surprised that councillor Clare doesn't seem to have seen the mess. I remember one of our park and ride sites was taken over illegally by a group of travellers who left it. I don't know what size the bill was. I possibly should ask the portfolio holder, but I just think we should be supporting this motion. The southern parishes, over certain periods of the year, sees large numbers of sites being illegally occupied, private land and our own land and parish land. And I just cannot understand the views being taken by the Liberal Group. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor McLean. Could I have councillor Becker, please? Councillor Becker.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Please, I apologise in advance if you hear the sounds of my children. It's bedtime, so they may be a little bit noisy. I'm sorry. I do have some serious concerns about the use of the motion process for a decision of this nature which seeks an outcome, which does primarily impact one ethnic minority group. Let's be really clear. This isn't a motion that simply seeks that a letter be written. The motion urges a letter to be written requesting a particular outcome. Now, that in itself makes a statement about this council's policies. If adopted, the outcome that is sought in this motion will have a disproportionate impact on one particular ethnic group. And I think any policy that seeks to do that should be subject to considerable consideration. It needs to be thought through properly. What's being done here doesn't do that. Taking the decision to write this letter in the way sought will make an explicit statement about the council's preferences, thereby adopting a particular policy. That hasn't been fully explored by the council. It hasn't been subject to any scrutiny. Other options have not been considered, nor have the equalities and human rights issues been considered. Agreeing this motion is to set a potentially dangerous precedent for policy development where that policy affects particular groups of people, one where issues are raised and decided upon without the opportunity for them to be thought through properly, the impacts properly considered and the pros and cons weighed up. The law also requires us to take decisions in particular ways. Under the Equalities Act, we should all be aware of our duties under the public sector equality duty. Understanding the impact of our decisions on people with different protected characteristics is an important part of complying with our duties. And that compliance with that duty falls on us. It falls on us as councillors. It is our responsibility. Yet here, we're being asked to make a request seeking a particular outcome without any understanding of the impact that this may have on our gypsy and traveller communities. And they are, I urge you to consider them, part of our communities. They are not a separate group that come into our communities. They form part of our communities and we need to think of them as such. So, how can we be assured that we are meeting our public sector equality duty when we have no information? This isn't an appropriate way of making policy that has such a significant impact on a group of people. As councillor Weir said, this is a serious and complex issue that needs to be considered in a measured way, not through a blunt instrument such as this motion. I will be voting against it.
Thank you councillor Becker. I'll call upon councillor Clamerton, please. Councillor Clamerton, please.
Yes, good evening and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just am very sad that we've been asked to support a motion from another area that is suffering from unlawful encampments. And I note the comments made by councillor Lerni and understand the unintended consequences. But the unlawful encampments are just a thin end of the wedge and without a deterrent, i.e. in this case to criminalise such activity, it acts as an encouragement to such encampments. Now, the problem with the Human Rights Act, which I'm hearing spoken about by my colleagues here, is that it serves one party and subsequently abuses another's human rights to live peacefully and enjoy their own privacy and safety without intimidation. I ask all councillors to search their own hearts and think what they would do should it be their homes and family or children who are abused and intimidated by a minority group encamping on their doorstep. Many residents in my own ward are suffering from an encampment, albeit that it has temporary planning approval, but it is a serious issue. And I accept that there are not enough sites for those who want to make a more permanent site to live on. And they're not quite as travelling as some of them. But it is nevertheless another consideration that we need to have some tool to deter these encampments and to give consideration to the residents in our own wards who are suffering quite badly, not least because of the cost that comes down out of their pockets to clean up after these and to the actual difficulty it causes the police and other people who are having to expend resources to do this. So, I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you councillor Clamerton. Councillor Porter, please. Councillor Porter, you're next.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. There are comments coming through on the chat function, which the public is not entitled to see, but it is becoming a debate in its own right. I don't feel that that is appropriate. Is it possible for a statement to be made about the appropriate use of the chat function, please?
That function should only be used for business related to the council meeting and the topics under discussion. That is a statement that as things should be. Thank you councillor Becker. I'm going to call on councillor Porter, please. Councillor Porter.
Thank you very much. And I just want to say very quickly, congratulations on your heroes awards. They were really well received. Thank you. Like councillor Lumby, I represent a ward where encampments have arrived and prompt action by the parish council has swiftly moved them on. And I know the parish council now has a plan which they repeat as necessary and occasionally they have to. On the last occasion, three of these events took place across the district on the same day. And if, in fact, the police had been called to all three, they would have had a serious capacity issued to act. But prompt action by the parish council, by the city council and by the St Peter's, Peter Simmons College enabled those sites to be moved on really quickly. And I agree too that the unauthorised encampments that are set up in council land, whether they take place on open space or in our own car parks, can be disruptive to the use of these areas and they may detrimentally impact people living in close proximity to the site which is occupied, but only for a few days. We've carefully considered, therefore, whether making trespass a criminal offence would actually assist the council in dealing with these incursions onto our land more effectively. And this is where we vary from Test Valley. It may be a different matter for private landowners and I expect this to be addressed in the government's response and any change in legislation. So, the council itself, which is the city council, now responds to encampments by using the magistrate's court procedure, rather than pursuing through the county court, as was historically the case. And this is proved to be effective and timely without incurring excessive cost. And most other district councils have not adopted our approach. In the vast majority of instances, the order requiring the land to be fainted is granted quickly by the magistrate's court and is generally complied with by the people on the site, making it unnecessary for us to take further enforcement action. As a council, therefore, we're not convinced that criminalising trespass would in itself be likely to result in fewer incidents occurring and/or better outcomes for the council when the sites are occupied. In reality, clearing up a site would happen whatever the process was taken to remove those people. Furthermore, if made criminal, there may be an expectation that transit sites would need to be provided by the council and this in itself wouldn't be straightforward to deliver, as every councillor on this council knows, and would involve significant resources in terms of acquiring and managing such sites. I'm aware that the picture for parish councils and property owners of private land is different and the current law provides that legislation necessary to move on encampments through the civil process as well as using the section 61 powers. So, I do agree with the mover of the motion that the majority of the sites which people move into within this district currently are at locations where trespass has not taken place and so therefore this legislation wouldn't be relevant at all. The consultation proposed that the trigger for police involvement in the size of encampment drop from six to two vehicles. The gov.uk website reports that the report is imminent, but nothing has arrived as of yesterday. Our paucity of move on sites here in the district means the police have to consider their commitment cannot, for a variety of reasons, move the trespass away to any of those sites. So, additionally, the criminalisation of trespass for small numbers of people, even if it has the caveat of an intention of an overnight stay, still has serious implications, for instance, for public protest. Others in the council chamber will rehearse the matter of addressing the equality duty and the human rights issue, which we've already raised, but the outcome of the legislative changes...
Councillor Porter, I'm going to have to hurry you on if you don't mind.
Okay. Last sentence. The outcome of the changes proposed in the consultation must surely be imminent. The consultation closed on the 7th of March. So, sending a letter now when we're so close to expecting an announcement seems pointless. But when we receive that information, we'll be happy to make a response as necessary.
Thank you councillor Porter. I'll now call upon councillor Brook, the second of the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to reserve the right to speak at the end of this debate. I wholeheartedly support this as a course of action for this council to take. During the planning process, experts engaged with members of our gypsy and traveller population. This engagement takes many different forms in order to ensure that engagement reaches as many people as is possible and with source and slinks input from as many of this population as possible. Thorough evidence is gathered to identify the number of plots and pictures that are needed within our district in order to plan for adequate allocations to house the gypsy and traveller demographic as part of our communities. Sites across the district are then identified based on their proximity to services and infrastructure, such as schools and doctors. This is also to ensure that they are a proper part of our communities. Encampments can then be regularised and ensure there is adequate provision for gypsies and travellers within our district. At the consultation stage, it would be easy to provide feedback if it were felt that allocation was too low, lacking or unsuitable. The planning process would, of course, need to be rigorous in ensuring that all allocations are available and acceptable to the gypsy and traveller community that they are to serve. This being the case, there should be no requirement for unauthorised encampments at all across our district, which then costs the council much-needed funds to remove and clean up after, having already spent much-needed funds on allocating appropriate plots and pictures for them. Councillor Lerni said that this would also target the homeless. I would expect as a portfolio holder of councillor Lerni to understand that this is not the case as government definitions of gypsy and travellers are very clear. My experience working alongside the police whilst tackling an unauthorised encampment in Den Mead was clearly expressed to me that the police would have wished to have greater powers due to the volume of calls they were receiving from residents reporting fires, inappropriate nudity, abuse of residents whilst using the public space. I understand that not all encampments have the volume of criminal activity that we experienced within Den Mead. However, this happens far too often. This motion calls for the council to commit to rights to central government to urge the creation of criminal offences of trespass when setting up an unauthorised encampment entering upon land as a trespasser with the purpose of residing there in a vehicle and residing in an unauthorised encampment. This motion does not imply gypsies and travellers are not part of our communities or should be marginalised. In fact, quite the opposite. This motion was very much introduced ensuring an inclusive approach should be taken to this demographic of our community. The calls from my colleagues on the other side of the House for proper consideration to be given to this and so therefore they can't support it seems openly appropriate when it's a motion set by our side of the council. It doesn't seem appropriate when, for example, taking action to house people in Coitbury House. Then proper consideration and consultation seems lacking. This motion would save taxpayers' money, save officer time, save time taken needlessly by the courts. So, I would urge you all to support this motion. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brooks. I will now close this debate of councillor Lumby's motion and ask him to exercise his right of reply to the debate. Councillor Lumby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm struggling with some technical issues at this end. Apologies. Can I just instead, because I can't find my notes, just quickly add up? Thank you everybody for... Thank you, everybody, for their contributions. I thought that was a helpful and constructive debate. Clearly, there are issues for members of the travellers' community, but there are also issues for residents who have to experience the intimidation and fear when they find an unauthorised encampment nearby them. I think it would be a great signal for us as a council to stand by our neighbours with both Liberal Democrats and Conservatives' support, as happened in Test Valley, and to send a signal that we are in these difficult times, standing with our parishes and standing with our residents and looking for an effective solution, one that simply is there to speed up the process of gaining possession. As we say, currently it takes around five days and that can generate, in the example I gave, 50 bags of rubbish. We merely want to speed that process up to actually encourage travellers to use the authorised sites rather than the unauthorised sites. So thank you, everybody, for your time this evening and for the contributions to the debate. And thank you also to those who took the time to speak to me about it beforehand. And please support the motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Lumby. A point of order has been raised by councillor Reed. Councillor Reed, if I could hear your point of order, please.
Chairman, apologies, but it would appear that when you asked to use the chat and I put a Q for question or D for debate, this has now been overlooked. And I notice there are other members who have asked to speak but have not been taken up. Could I ask why we are not allowed to speak, especially someone as myself who has had direct experience of two illegal encampments in my particular patch?
Thank you, councillor Reed. Catherine Knight, please.
Councillor Reed, the constitution allows 20 minutes for overall debate and the time has unfortunately run out. So we are out of time and that's why we went to the secondor and then the right.
I also believe that your comment was in relation to councillor McLean's comment as far as audibility was concerned. I know that councillor McLean wrote the word audibility on his on his comment and that your reply was, your comment in it was with a D, a small d afterwards. And I don't think that actually meant anything to anyone in terms of your request to partake in the debate. That was the problem, I think. And then, of course, we ran out of time by the time you raised it.
Yeah. However, my question, my debate element was nothing to do with councillor McLean's question at all. D was for debate, I've used it in the past and as I've used the Q for question, because to put questions into the chat facility is being misused by some people.
Well, okay, thank you, councillor, but I don't believe that the small letter d did indicate a request for a debate or was recognised as such here at this end. I will move on. Now, there's been quite a bit of debate going on and certainly I believe that both sides of the debate deserve a recorded vote in order to assess the situation. No?
Well, Mr Mayor, someone from the floor needs to request a recorded vote, but there clearly is a difference of view across the chamber. So, Mr Mayor, you can take a-
Request.
Thank you, councillor McLean. Is there a member's assertion to that, please?
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you.
Agreed. I've got more than five.
Okay, Mr Mayor, we'll move to a recorded vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members. I will call out your name if you could indicate your for, against or abstaining against the motion that has just been discussed and debated. Councillor Atwood.
Against.
Councillor Becker.
Against.
Councillor Bell.
Against.
Councillor Bentote.
Against.
Councillor Bronk.
Against.
Councillor Brooke.
For.
Councillor Cleare.
Against.
Councillor Clemmerson.
For.
Councillor Cook.
For.
Councillor Crask.
Against.
Councillor Cunningham.
For.
Councillor Cutler.
Against.
Councillor Evans.
Against.
Councillor Fern.
Against.
Councillor Ferguson.
Against.
Councillor Gemmell.
For.
Councillor Godfrey.
For.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Against.
Councillor Green.
Against.
Councillor Griffiths. Councillor Griffiths.
Yeah, apologies, for.
Councillor Hiscock.
Against.
Councillor Horrell.
For.
Councillor Humby.
For.
Councillor Hutchison.
Against.
Councillor Laming.
Against.
Councillor Lernery.
Against.
Councillor Lumby.
For.
Councillor Mather.
For.
Councillor McLean.
For.
Councillor Miller.
For.
Councillor Murphy.
Against.
Councillor Pearson.
What a motion.
Councillor Porter.
Against.
Councillor Power.
Against.
Councillor Prince.
Against.
Councillor Reed.
For.
Councillor Afell.
For.
Councillor Rutter.
Against.
Councillor Scott.
For.
Councillor Thompson.
Against.
Councillor Todd.
Against.
The Todd.
Against.
Councillor Weir.
Against.
Councillor Weston.
For.
Councillor Williams.
Again.
Thank you, members. Just bear with us, we just toss up those results.
Eighteen to twenty-six, the motion is defeated.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We've just been advised that there's a technical issue with the audibility on the external broadcast members. So with Mr Mayor's discretion, we'll just take a five-minute adjournment in order to check the tech.
Meeting is adjourned for five minutes. Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Welcome back. We think we've sorted out the problem now. Can I then move on to agenda item number seven, changes to committee memberships? Catherine Knight.
Mr Mayor, I have not been, thank you, I've not been advised of any changes to committee memberships. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Agenda item number eight, questions from members of council. All members have copies of the questions and the answers, which were circulated electronically prior to the meeting and also available on the council's website. A reminder that our procedure is that only the questioner is able to ask one supplementary question and should indicate accordingly. Members are reminded that our procedure rules allow a total time occupied by questions and the answers and the supplementaries shall not exceed 30 minutes. In order to maximise the opportunity for questions to be answered, can I ask that supplementary questions are succinct and to the point, please? So we start off with question number one, which is from councillor Gemmell. Councillor Gemmell, we've seen your reply. Do you have a supplementary?
Oh, yes, I would. Yes, I would like one, thank you. Mr Mayor, and I would have thanked the leader for her response, but the paucity of that reflects the paucity of the work brought before us. Where is the transparency and openness when nothing is before us in full council for examination and scrutiny? You are all mouth and political diatribe and no trouser.
Leader, can you reply to the supplementary question?
I'm not sure that really was a question, to be honest.
Where is the openness and transparency?
Okay, well, during this council year so far, we've held a number of council meetings. We've held a number of cabinet meetings. We've slotted in extra cabinet meetings to deal with the business. And members on both sides of the council have been present and have asked questions and taken part in the debate. Indeed, since the beginning of this municipal year, we have held at full council, we've had a virtual mayor making, we had a revised budget in response to Covid at our last council meeting. We debated two motions, we've had the annual scrutiny report, we've had one petition. But importantly, we've had 40 questions answered by councillors or to us and we've answered them. And we've also had seven questions from members of the public. So, and I would say even at meetings of cabinet, we have continued to have a number of members of the public coming to ask us questions. And I don't know how more transparent you expect us to be. Everything is being done online and in the full gaze of everybody, both public and councillors to join in and take part, and they have been doing so.
Thank you, leader. A point of order, please, from Miss councillor Evans.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got an echo on my thing. Are you satisfied, Mr Mayor, that the supplementary question put forward by councillor Gemmell did not transgress the rules of polite behaviour to fellow councillors?
I can't remember exactly the wording that councillor Gemmell used, but I would hope that most of our councillors, and in fact all of our councillors, should use proper English and proper languages when making questions and on air on our council full council meetings. So, yes, I will take that on board and thank you. Thank you, councillor Evans.
Mr Mayor, what concerned me, I'm sorry, I pressed the wrong button, I pressed the red telephone by mistake, so I missed your answer. But what concerned me was the element of rudeness in the supplementary question. So that's my point of order.
Yes, councillor Evans, I did address that issue in my reply. Unfortunately, I believe, as you say, you were offline. But I did underline the point that the council meetings should be conducted in the proper language, okay?
Thank you.
Question number two, councillor Weir. Councillor Weir, you have a question. Would you like to ask a supplementary?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I would. And thank you to the portfolio holder for her reply. Does the cabinet member agree with me that obliging parents from Kings Barton and their neighbouring communities to walk their very young children to school along a muddy, unmaintained country path shared with dog walkers, runners and mountain bikers amongst others is a complete disgrace? And would she join with me in calling through the executive member for transport on Hampshire County Council, who are sitting on S106 funds for this purpose, to provide, as a matter of urgency, safe sanitary access for children to this lovely school, working with the developer to surface the pathway and store more dog bins before winter sets in and the route becomes unusable and the school effectively inaccessible? Thank you.
Thank you for your question and thank you for your supplementary question. Yes, I do agree it's extremely frustrating that we haven't managed to have this path surfaced before the children started school and the school opened, particularly as many of the parents are not only taking their young children to school, but also pushing pushchairs as well. And it's proving to be very difficult for them, particularly as the weather has been so bad in the last few days or last few months. I was heartened by an active travel conference recently hosted by Hampshire County Council, where they showed pictures of cycling and walking routes, but still very frustrated by the fact that we can't tie up S106 funding from the developers for this site to do this work, despite the developer offering to do the work on the county council's behalf. And so we've set up a principle of a project board with the county council to try and press them to achieve this work as quickly as possible. Because I do agree with you, it is unreasonable for a school's path, main path into school, to be muddy and unsanitary. And there's no doubt that in the wintertime, it certainly is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Porter.
Councillor Pearson, point of order, Mr Mayor.
I have a point of order from councillor Pearson before we proceed on to question number three. Councillor Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My query, is it appropriate to ask questions in Winchester City Council that are correctly targeted the Hampshire County Council? Surely this is Winchester City Council and that question should not have been asked at this forum.
So, yes.
Thank you, Laura. Question number-
I'm sorry, Mr Mayor.
I didn't hear that.
Completely missed that.
I didn't hear that response, Mr Mayor.
Oh, right, okay, sorry. Can we have a response again, please, so that the members can hear properly?
Of course, Mr Mayor. It's appropriate for questions to be asked of council that affect the district as a whole. And it's appropriate for that question to have been asked of us, given that we work in partnership with the county council to deliver that function. Thank you.
Might I point out, Mr Mayor, that that question was pointed towards a member of this council who happens to be a county councillor? That surely is not appropriate.
I think he's referring to councillor Humby.
Yeah.
He's referring to councillor Porter.
Thank you, no, thank you councillor Pearson, you've made your point, thank you for your point of order, it is taken on.
Councillor McLean, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McLean. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I make the same point, I believe that is totally out of order, I've seen it in the Chronicle, it's all over the front pages of the Chronicle with three members of our council, our district council. This is purely political, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McLean, councillor Gottfried.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm grateful to the councillor Ferguson for her response to my question, although I can see councillor Todd on my screen, which is always very unnerving. The list of support given to businesses in the reply to my question is, you know, interesting, it's not full of action, more discussion than signposting. When are the council going to start doing something substantial to not only support the shortage of employment space within the city, which will take a long, a long time to deliver, to make sure this city remains an economic, economically vibrant place to, to live? But also, when are we going to stop shooting ourselves in the foot by increasing parking charges and narrowing the roads, cause more congestion and more pollution in our city centre?
Thank you councillor Gottfried. Councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you councillor Gottfried for your supplementary question. I think that the, our ability to focus on creating new employment space is absolutely clear. Not only are we bringing forward the work on the Bishop's Wharf and Deppes side, it's going well, and we should start seeing physical structures going up very soon. And at the cabinet meeting in October, we made our commitment to creating more new business units at the old Goodshend at Barind in Winchester. And in fact, we've worked alongside Incu Hive to create 11,000 square feet of additional new office space, business space for new businesses, new startups. And in fact, I was there yesterday, the building is looking great, and they already have a 48% occupancy rate, and that facility will be open from December. And through the process of that refurbishment, they have in fact employed over twenty local businesses to do that work. And in addition, we're well advanced in working with another partner and in discussion with the M3 Left to create some more flexible working space in the city using businesses, using our properties which are currently unoccupied. This is in response to businesses' needs, workers' needs, commuters' needs, to have somewhere in the city where they can meet up to work if it's either not possible to work from home, or they're no longer required to go into London by their employers, but their employers do want them to have some working space outside the home. In addition, we're pressing forward with the work we want to do at King's Walk to create a new creative quarter for the city. All of this to me is direct action and is all happening right now. You also raised the question around increased parking charge. Councillor Todd may want to answer this more fully, but we have no evidence to show that the increase in the parking charge has actually decreased the demand for parking in the city and in fact has caused no, had no impact on the number of people that are coming into the city to shop and to work. You also raised the issue of the narrowing of the pavement on North Walls. This was a decision taken by the county council and was put in place to allow for correct social distancing on what are very narrow and dangerous footpaths in that part of the city. Again councillor Todd may want to comment more, but it does not seem to have impacted on our businesses in the city, although I freely admit there are times when it does get blocked, but it used to get blocked before the system was narrowed. Thank you councillor Gottfried.
Thank you very much, thank you very much indeed councillor Ferguson. Moving on please, question number four, councillor Bronc. Councillor Bronc, you've received a reply to your question, do you have a supplementary?
Good evening. May I just say, and I'm sorry I didn't mention before, it just struck me that I'd asked the question obviously as a ward councillor for Tolden Common and Twyford, and we are possibly more affected by the aircraft flight paths than other parts of the district, and that would affect me as a resident of the ward as well. So perhaps I had a conflict that I, a conflict of interest that needed to be registered. That, that said now, I'm very grateful for the response from the cabinet member and I don't have any supplementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just before we move on, Mr Mayor, I can see that David McLean is wishing to indicate a declaration of interest. Councillor McLean?
Councillor McLean.
No, it was really a reply to Kelsey Lernie's question. She says which part of the constitution...
Okay, thank you councillor McLean.
I said declaration of interest.
Thank you for that, thank you for that councillor. Okay, I'll move on then in that case to question number five. Question number five, councillor Mather, you've received a reply to your question, do you have a supplementary? Mather.
We can move on, Mr Mayor.
I'll come back to that if we have time. Question number seven, councillor Lumby. Councillor Lumby, can you tell me whether you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm just again struggling.
Mr Mayor, sorry to interrupt.
Pardon, question number...
Six.
Question number six, yes.
Sorry councillor Lumby and Mr Mayor.
Yeah, I just realised that. Right, question number six is councillor Horle. Sorry councillor Lumby, I'll come back to you in a moment. Councillor Mather put us all for there, I'm afraid. Councillor Horle, your question if you have a supplementary please.
Mr Mayor, sorry for the interruption, but I didn't want to get missed out there, thank you very much. And I don't know whether you've seen my recommendation to you in the chat, that we should applaud your wonderful awards. We were rather silent when that wonderful video was shown earlier, and at some point this evening, I think we should show our appreciation of all those individuals and organisations who you have recognised by a round of applause at some point this evening, when you feel that is appropriate. I'm not sure whether you'd seen that. But thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to councillor Porter for clarifying the dates of the next meeting. My supplementary to councillor Porter is that we have a very significant number of issues that have sort of developed over the last few weeks. We've obviously had the two consultation documents that we have submitted to government, we had the motion that we brought forward and you had accepted that we would discuss that in the local plan group regarding green belts. We have obviously the continuation of lockdowns and all the impacts on businesses and residents locally. And so my question is really councillor Porter, is one meeting on the 23rd of November really doing justice to an action plan? And in fact, what has happened to the issues and options paper, which was far more detailed and actually raising all of the queries that we as a district need to address? Is the local plan action plan the substitute for the issues and actions paper? Or is that going to be done separately or in another vein? It is not clear to me what we're heading towards in that one meeting and whether we're doing justice to such an important aspect for all members of the district regarding the development of the local plan. Thank you councillor Porter and thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Porter, if I may ask you to reply.
Thank you councillor Horle, and I gather that 6pm isn't suitable on that day, so we're making efforts to make sure it's the time which suits you and all of the other members as well, because conscious that actually it does need debate on the 23rd of November. The local plan advisory group is in very important part of that to advise cabinet on that very important local plan action plan, and it's due to be presented rather than discussed on, at cabinet on the 16th of December, so that we can get going on it straight after Christmas at that time. It will include the discussion about the green belt, and it will include in fact, hopefully some answers to the questions we've raised with the MHCLG, so that we will have a clear answer on that. Because as you know, with the strategic issues and options paper, it was based on a number of houses, but actually much lower than had been put forward by government. The government statement didn't actually look at the economy and on industrial and economic land that we might be considering. And also, we believe that we should be calling for the green sites as well, in line with the public's needs and also our needs and our plans for carbon neutrality and biodiversity. So those points will all be raised on the 23rd of November. If we don't feel that that's enough time and we aren't giving it enough time, I'm certainly very happy to have another meeting, and I hope you would be too, so that we can debate those in full. As you know, we probably hadn't been so far on with the strategic issues and options as we were, literally just about to present it to the public when the new plans came in, that would have been easier to have gone ahead, but we had, we were basically at the point of publication. This allows us to rethink that, and I can assure you that work is ongoing, so that when it's presented on the 16th of December, we can press the button and go. But it is important that we have the LPAG first, so that we have a discussion about what will be contained in that, so that we can really delve down into that and make sure that when we do present it to cabinet on the 16th of December, it's absolutely right and can go straight ahead without delay.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Porter.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm delighted to say that councillor Mather has now got access to the meeting, so councillor Mather, you've received your answer to the question, do you have a supplementary to put? Councillor Mather.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry. Yes, it's malfunctioned. I thank the portfolio holder for his answer and for his splitting of hairs. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. The abolition of free city centre parking does have a knock-on effect on Colebrook Street in particular, and, and my question, I asked in response to an oral complaint from a resident of that street. The situation will only get worse. Those wishing to park have an amazing ability to find, find free convenient parking. Do you regret, councillor Todd, not getting ahead with making resident parking in the city centre enforceable on Sunday? That, that is one question. My other question is, will the city council, in common with other councils, be allowing free parking during lockdown?
Thank you very much councillor Mather. Councillor Todd, could you give a reply please?
So in answer to the first question, which is whether I regret not having introduced further restrictions, I've actually done an online survey of local residents, and two-thirds of them living in the centre have said that they didn't want an extension of control parking zones in their area to include Sunday. However, there are a couple of zones that have, where the picture is slightly different. And my experience, hard-earned experience of parking restrictions, it is, it is normally best to see what's actually happening, what the actual problems are and who's actually unhappy, before leaping in with a proposal, because generally people don't vote for, or don't respond to consultations in favour of extra restrictions until they've experienced a problem. There's really no way round this in my repeated experience of parking zone consultations. I am appreciative that there are, I think I've heard from four zones where there appears to be a preponderance of people who have a concern, but I wanted to find out which zones had a problem, who wanted us to take action, before leaping into a process which might actually end up being very wasteful. It seemed more useful to hear from residents first and then move as quickly as we can to make sure that only the people that actually want greater restrictions would then face them. In terms of the question of whether all parking be made free during the lockdown period, of course, it's important to state that the parking for key workers is already free, and that is intended to stay the case. We will be looking at what the options are. A series of parking issues have emerged which need interventions and plans to address them, and it is the intention to come forward with a Covid parking strategy, both that covers the lockdown and the problems that it is driving. So one issue that we've seen emerging, for example, is that in residential areas, the larger number of people working from home in a few zones and not in all, is putting a lot of pressure on parking. And so we will be, we are looking to come back with a formalised view as to how we can ensure that we have an appropriate parking system that works well for residents. And again, in the online survey that I did with city centre residents, I was perhaps surprised to discover that the majority of people in the centre were telling us that they wanted us to maintain enforcement of parking during lockdown. Now there may be reasons why that might not be possible, but again, I do not, I think it's important that we work with residents to find solutions to their problems, rather than necessarily leaping in and assuming that we know the answer when we don't.
Thank you councillor Todd. Bless you for your patience councillor Lumby, it is your turn.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for getting to me eventually. I'm just finding my notes as well. Thank you very much indeed, and thank you also to the portfolio holder for her very detailed response. Thank you also to the chief executive for providing further detail, start of tonight's meeting. My question was perhaps a little prescient in that it was asking what the plans were in the event of a further lockdown. Wasn't sure I knew that at the time that the question was asked, but anyway, well timed. It will undoubtedly be a difficult time for many residents and businesses, as the chief executive set out earlier on. Does the portfolio holder agree with me that as members, we should all be working together to support our offices, parishes and community groups at this time, all acting for the benefit of our residents, our businesses and our district as a whole? Thank you.
Councillor Lumby. Councillor Ferguson, please, would you like to reply to the question?
Yes, thank you councillor Lumby for your question. I believe that Winchester City Council has done an exemplary job in supporting businesses and residents over the last eight months, both during the first lockdown, when the businesses were forced to close, and during the recovery period, when we put in place a range of measures to support our businesses and our residents, to build confidence and to welcome people back safely. Excuse me, something in my throat. And indeed, the feedback we've had from both residents and businesses has been, has borne this out. It is undoubtedly really tough on businesses and our residents. We now face a second lockdown. But I absolutely accept that this is necessary, as we have seen infection rates beginning to rise both in the district and across the country, and we must drive these infection rates down. I know that for our businesses, this will be a very difficult period, because many of them don't have any of the economic resilience perhaps that they had before. And this is a critical period, particularly for those retail and hospitality businesses, as we are in the run-up to the Christmas period. I absolutely want us all to work together to do what we can to support our businesses and residents at this time. And I'm looking forward to working constructively with councillor Lumby as a shadow member for the local economy to do what we can to both help our businesses survive, protect jobs and to look for a very strong recovery. So I welcome a very constructive approach. Thank you councillor Lumby.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you councillor Ferguson. Question number eight, councillor Pearson. Councillor Pearson, you've received a reply to your question. Do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor, if I may. It's obviously directed again to councillor Todd. May I thank you first councillor Todd for the detailed answer you gave to Mrs. Isaacs. I hope some of that detail goes on to the written response when that appear, to her, when that appears in due course. Regarding my answers, again, thank you for the, going through each of the sub-questions that I asked, even though some of the answers were a little vague. Now firstly, your answer for part one. Please bear in mind, and I've said this repeatedly during the time, certainly over the last 10 years while I've been on the council, and indeed other members have said it, not all people are computer savvy. To basically say you're giving in information in detail only on the website, frankly misses the very people who are most in need of that information. Would you not agree with that? Or perhaps you do. Part two, there, your response, I regret to say, begs the question regarding duty of care. You quite rightly point out universal credit and housing benefits. Well, again, these people who are going to be asked, the ones with gardens, to pay up to £59 a year. This is an initial cost that particularly at this time may create additional financial issues that Covid is already piling on this very same group of people. And the same applies, you say later on, I think is, yes, in part four, where no discounts are available. Please, may I ask of you councillor Todd to reconsider that statement, particularly for those families who have gardens, who are on a low income, as illustrated by the fact that they are also claiming universal credits of one way or another.
Thank you very much councillor Pearson. Councillor Todd, if you could have replied to the question?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I seem to be generating several questions with each of my answers, but I will do my best to cover them as best I may. First of all, can I reassure councillor Pearson that we will be making sure that nobody is more focused than I am in terms of making sure that everybody across the district has the information they need and the access that they need in order to be able to sign up for this service. And indeed, I'd like to pay tribute to the hard work done by council officers to ensure that everybody working in the call centre has been trained in terms of explaining the new service and helping people sign up to it over the phone, should people choose to do so. And if councillor Pearson would like to test that, I would be very interested in whatever feedback he gave me. We are, of course, using online methods to reach people, because for many people it is very cost-effective. And indeed, and as it says in the, and we are also looking at hybrid approaches. So the paper leaflet that went out to every resident beginning of September, more than 2,000 people responded via email, asking that they be informed when the service be introduced. They were emailed earlier today and already nearly 500 people have signed up to the service and subscribed to get one of the new garden waste bins. But I have asked specifically as part of the marketing programme that we look at other physical collateral that goes out around the district, whether it be leaflets through doors or perhaps a hanger on a garden waste bag after somebody's had it collected with further information. We're still working through the final details of the plan, but it is absolutely the case that further information will be available to people, particularly those who use garden waste service at the moment. As I mentioned in my earlier answer, if you want to talk about the £59 240 litre bin, you need to remember that the equivalent bag service of three bags costs £75 to sign up to. So there is no such thing as a free equivalent to the 240 litre bin, and there never has been. And any councillor that implies that there is, is being deliberately and knowingly dishonest to the public when they say so. There is however, a £39 service, as we've mentioned, and we have done our absolute utmost to make sure that that is as affordable as we could make it. I touched in passing, and all authorities are under great financial pressure at the moment. And apart from one authority, which is Hart, no, no authority in the district in Hampshire offers a discount, although it is something that I personally am keen to see if we can make work, if we can, when the financial situation allows. All I would say is the way that some people have made it work is by charging quite a lot more so that they can then offer a discount. It actually costs more as a universal credit claimant to sign up for the Hart District Council 140 litre bin than it does all residents in Winchester to sign up for a 140 litre bin. So the way we've tried to do it, at least in this first phase, is by driving down the cost as low as we can get it, which is why the cost of our service is £15 below the average of all the other districts in Hampshire. And of course, there is no district in Hampshire which will be offering a free garden waste service, an important point of comparison. But that said, if we can find a way of making the service more widely available and more cheaply available to those.
Good wind up your answer now.
Be very happy to do so. And it's something I intend to try and make happen at the earliest opportunity, but we are not able to do it at this time.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that councillor Todd.
Yes, thank you. I will remind my councillor's tenants of what you've said and your lack of sympathy.
Point of order from councillor Godfrey, please. Point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure it is inadvertent, but councillor Todd has incorrectly stated the current charge for free garden waste bags has been £75. That is not correct. It is £50, for £25 for each additional bag over one issue. I wonder if councillor Todd can correct himself.
Yes, very briefly, if you could clarify that, but thank you for your contribution councillor Godfrey. Councillor Todd?
Yeah, I will just, I'm just looking on the council's website, but I think I took the £75 verbatim from the council website. But I will, I will just double check that.
Okay, that's fine.
And then if I may quickly come back and read out what is stated on the council website, so that everybody.
I'm trying to get as many questions in as I can councillor. Councillor McLean, councillor McLean, you have a question. Do you have a supplementary, please? I really don't. I'm shocked. Thank you. Thank you councillor McLean. Councillor Cook, councillor Cook, you have a question. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, I do have a supplementary question for the portfolio holder. May I ask the question, please?
Please fire, please fire ahead.
I thank the portfolio holder for replying to my question, but the question I have, and I still have, is did the people know, as in the members of the leisure club, did they actually know this was happening? I.e. the processing of their data going from one leisure centre to another? Because if they did not know this by form of letter, this is known as invisible processing, I think you'll agree. So that's the processing of data without their permission. So that is my supplementary question to the portfolio holder.
Thank you very much councillor. Can I hear from councillor, councillor Todd?
Leader, it'll be the leader because councillor Prince is absent.
Councillor Prince isn't here, I'm afraid.
Sorry.
Oh, you are here.
Councillor Prince, I'm sorry.
Councillor Prince, thank you.
I've got to say, thank you councillor Cook for your supplementary question. And I do appreciate that you are seeking to protect members as much as you can. Just to update you, before I suggest where we go from here, is that we have had three effective complaints about whether we've contravened GDPR. The other 2,300 members have all shown that they have been satisfied with our approach. And indeed, they were advised by a letter sent to them in advance of it, which gave them time to either say something or whatever, pull out of the situation. So we have had that particular piece in place and done that. At all times, we have taken notice of legal advice on this. Legal advice from two sources. Both Places for People were leading the approach and we had our own in-house lawyers working on this. What I believe you should do as the next step forward, because clearly you are concerned about this, and I can understand why, is that you should, you should approach our legal people and ask them for a full and comprehensive answer. I don't have it available to me at the moment. I looked on my system to see if it was there, but I haven't got it at the moment while we've been having this meeting. I'm not very good at doing two things at once, multitasking. That must be us men. But anyway, that's me. So can I ask that you contact the legal side of the officers and ask for a full update? They will hear this response that I'm giving, but I do appreciate your answer, your question on this. The leisure centre, dare I say, and I do welcome your comments, because you make some very, very kind comments, how well it's coming on. I did endeavour to get a day's visit or a half-day visit, but that's had fallen through because of coronavirus. But what we are trying to do, and I've held this until the end of the meeting, is that we are trying to get a video of the centre as it is. It is coming on inside as well as out. And the, for those who are involved with the money side, on the whole, it is looking on target for the cost of budget that was set and we're looking as though we are going to achieve a spring launch date. So that I'm sure should make you happy. We haven't had complaints from the 2,300 people who have received the transfer of membership. I think that is very important for us to understand. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you again.
Thank you councillor Prince. Councillor Todd, we did discuss the clarification earlier on. You have a point of personal explanation to make?
Yes, on a point of personal explanation, I have posted in the chat of this meeting a link to the previous version of the webpage and a reference to also the order form that you used to order bags. I was very careful to say that it was the cost of signing up to the service. So given that I have shown that all the statements I made on the cost of subscribing or ordering extra bags were accurate, I would appreciate if councillor Godfrey would acknowledge that.
Thank you for your explanation and clarification. I'm done now. I've basically finished as far as I'm concerned. That concludes the form of business for this evening.
Right.
Yes, it does. And I'm now closing the meeting. Has the recording stopped?
Mr. Mayor, I'm really sorry, but I think whilst the recording is going, we as councillors should acknowledge everyone in your video and actually celebrate them. And I'd welcome it if all councillors joined in a round of applause for all those organisations and individuals, because if we'd been in the room, we would have celebrated that all together. So I would recommend that we do that.
Thank you councillor.